Welcome. I'm Andrea Hobbly, Vice President of the League of Women Voters Woodbury Cottage Grove Area. The purpose of the League, national, state, and local, is to empower voters and defend democracy. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization. Its mission is to patience citizens in government, work to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influence public policy through education and advocacy. The League strengthens our communities by promoting voter registration, conducting candidate forums, and informing voters on public policy through education. And now I'll turn it over to Jody Ratacca, who is moderating today.
Thank you, Andrea. And thank you for those joining us. The purpose of this forum is to give Washington County Commissioner District Two voters a chance to hear candidates discuss issues of importance to them in this election. This educational opportunity is free and open to the public. And our candidates are Stan Karwoski and Julie Oles. And the forum is as follows. The candidate forum is that each candidate will have one minute for opening statements, and we rotate the questions, and we will give one minute for answering the questions and any follow-up questions, 30 seconds. Questions have been submitted by voters to the League email and/or during voter service events in the community. At the end of the questions, you will have one minute for a closing statement. The forum is being live streamed and broadcasted by SWCTC. The viewing audience can submit questions via a call or text to the number that is displayed on the screen during the forum. And this forum is being recorded and can be viewed until Election Day on the SWCTC website and on the Woodbury Cottage Grove Area League Women Voters website. The timekeepers, we're pleased to have with us League of Women Voter volunteers Betsy and Sandy, so they will be holding up signs to indicate 30 seconds and 15 seconds remaining until the end of the question. So it's now my pleasure and honor to introduce the District Two candidates, Dan Karwoski and Julie Oles. Julie Oles could not be with us tonight, and she has submitted her opening statement, so I will now present and read her statement. My name is Julie Oles, and I'm running for County Commissioner, District Two. I'm sorry I cannot be here tonight. I'm a special education teacher, and with school starting, I'm not able to attend. I've been a Woodbury resident for 20 years. I'm married and have two adult children. I have a bachelor's and a master's degree. I'm a founding member and current chair of the Woodbury Yellow Ribbon Network. I'm also on the Board of the Woodbury Police Canine Fund, and I'm serving on the school board for Woodbury Leadership Academy. I previously served a three-year term on the Woodbury Business Development Commission, and I also served on the Community Business and Business Advisory Committee for the Met Council Gold Line, and I served three terms on the Woodbury City Council. I would like very much to be elected to serve as a county commissioner. The county has been run by older white men for a couple, with a couple of exceptions, for many, many years. I believe it is time for a change, and I know that I would be a good change. My areas of focus would be on affordable housing, public safety, addiction, mental health challenges, a strong business climate, and fiscal responsibility. And please vote for Oles. And now for candidate Karwoski, your opening statements.
Thank you, Jody. Hello, citizens. My name is Stan Karwoski. I'm the current County Commissioner for District Two. I'm serving in my sixth year. I want to thank the League of Women Voters. I've been a member for several years myself for the League of Women Voters. Reasons for my reelection is, one, I think I'm doing a really good job. I think the county's going in the right direction. We have a very good county. I'd like to keep it that way. But I have a track record of reasons would be a disciplined budgeting, low county property taxes, clean water for our future, vibrant parks and libraries, public safety to reduce crime and hold criminals accountable. The accomplishments I'll cover in the hour to come. You can Google Stan Karwoski and get a lot of background on me. Oh, thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll begin the questions, and as I mentioned, the questions have been submitted by the voters to the League email and during voter service events in the community. So the first question is, if elected, what would be your top three priorities?
Thank you. I just mentioned them, but I think they're worth mentioning again. Disciplined budgeting, and that's how we keep low taxes. We need to have a budget that's smart and improves our county but doesn't ask for any more money than it needs. Clean water. Right now, with myself on the board, we protected 1,100 acres of pristine water. Water is our future. We can't take it for granted. Vibrant parks. And then my third one would be public safety. We're going to be tough on crime. We have been, and we're going to hold juveniles accountable, get them on the correct path or more severe crimes. They will do time. Thank you.
The next question. What actions would you take to address affordability of housing in our county? How do you define affordability specifically as it refers to median income?
Okay. Well, what I'm going to do about affordable housing, working with our existing county board, we have strategically used one-time money, ARPA funds, American Relief Plan Act funds, and we have invested $7.5 million in an affordable housing unit. We're looking on a site. We're finalizing details, be multi-unit, very nice apartment that will be 30% under the median income. So the average resident that's making less than 30% of the median would get a very favorable rent that could give them a head start, and hopefully they'll move into a house. We're actually doing things. We're working on some emergency shelter housing. And so I think making actions, one, it's very difficult to afford a house these days, and if we can help in some way, one is keeping home taxes low for that people, that's for people can afford the home once they're in it. Thank you.
Next question. What do you see as the biggest challenges in mental health and social services in our county, and how would you address them?
Yeah. Biggest challenge is getting to citizens at an early time. Right now, we're pushing up to the state government to get more funding for early intervention on mental health problems. The problems are a lot easier to solve. They're less costly. A person with mental health might get into crimes and whatnot. One thing we've implemented, working with the Woodbury Police Department, is our county has embedded social workers to work with the Woodbury Police Department to identify homes and residents that are in crisis, that we can make strides to work with them before they use a gun, maybe shoot a family member or commit a crime. We can make contact with that person early. I'm very proud of this early intervention, working with the Woodbury Police Department on mental health. Thank you.
We don't have rebuttals, but do you have an additional comment on that area?
You know, every, every family's got mental health problem. In my family, we've, I'm not going to say who, but, you know, we all suffer with someone that needs some help. So it's a universal problem, and I think we're starting to recognize it. And the investment, our society is so much better off if we make the investment and recognize that it's a problem. Thank you.
Next question. If there were to be budget cuts during your term, what are the most essential county services that you would advocate to preserve?
Well, we have an example of 2020 with the pandemic. We had a flat budget, no levy increase. So we've done that in the past. Right now, we're having a modest increase of, in the 4% levy increase. But if we get on really tough times and had to cut back, one, you know, you don't improve your county by making cuts to reduce taxes, but we do, can reduce taxes, and we should where we're not getting a good service out of it. So I would name the taxes to support public safety. As an elected official, we're for public safety as the core value, and also safety net programs. The county provides services to help people in need. So it'd probably be in the areas of some of the recreation. We can still have good parks with maybe some of the programming. And we would really look carefully, though, at cuts. It would be an important step, and you would have to look carefully. Thank you.
Thank you. What are your thoughts on reducing the contributing factors to our changing climate and proposals to address the effects of the changing climate?
Yeah, well, I think as residents and elected officials, we all play a part in our future. I think anybody, it's truly becoming apparent that climate change is a factor. We have more erratic storms, higher heat, colder days. It is happening. So we need to make investments, smart investments. I mentioned that we have protected 1,100 acres that I've been on the board of protecting pristine water and natural areas. Those have cooling effect on our climate. If we have, make everything developed in asphalt, we are adding to the climate change. So we need to have smart development to keep taxes low and protect land where we can. So that's, I'll leave it at that for now.
Thank you. What is the role of the county government in addressing the impacts of rapid growth and development on the quality of life in the county?
The county, cities do zoning and zone for development. Counties support the infrastructure for the development. But we can, as I mentioned, we are, we can slow down growth by, as a county, by protecting land, expanding our parks, which we have Cottage Grove Ravine Park. We've added acreage. We've added amenities for people to enjoy the parks. You know, and I think even now with people working from home, I think we have to encourage smart growth where the office space doesn't necessarily have to be as large. But we, we need growth to keep taxes down, but it can be slow with quality and be a partner with our cities such as Woodbury, partner on their goals and the county goals to make sure we're doing the right things.
And a related type of question, as a commissioner, what advice would you give that the rapid-growing cities to ensure the quality, quantity, and the quality of the safe water with the rapid growth?
Yeah. Safe water, we cannot assume anymore that we're going to have plentiful and safe water. As I mentioned, I can't mention enough, we are going to continue to protect critical water resources, pristine water that feed our aquifers. The cities are the ones that actually pump, make wells, and provide water. The county has a, we have a water management plan for all the groundwater. We work with the watershed districts to make sure the streams are clean, to make sure they're providing a good habitat for, for wildlife and such.
Thank you. What would you recommend for enhancing the county's recycling and environmental effects?
Enhancing it? Fully supportive. We're quite proud as being a county board member in this area. At the Newport facility, there's a mandate to go to 75% recycled waste recycled or made into energy. We've invested in, we're going to go into organics during the course of 2023, that we turn the organics, peelings, fat, bones, we'll convert that to an energy product, a fertilizer product. That hasn't been determined, but by 2030, only 25% will be put in the ground. Also, we have a hazardous waste site here in Woodbury that we've expanded. We're creating a hazardous waste site up in the Hugo area. And right now, we're working on a central yard waste site, and I'm helping lead that. That would be important to District Two. We're kind of in the center west of the county.
Thank you. What does equity mean to you? Where do you think Washington County has made progress with regards to equity? Where do you think progress still needs to be made? And how would you support that?
I find too often people talk about equity but don't do anything. We are making strides. As the county board in 2019, we approved an equity and diversity and inclusion manager. And within our workforce, we have roughly close to high teens of minority populations, about 19, 17 to 19%. It varies in the county, but overall. And we need to at least have, it would be nice to have our county employees the face of the county and get up to that point. We're working towards achieving a similar amount of minorities. And then providing the equity as hiring practices. At the county, we're making it easier to get, start on a job, and then once you're doing a good job on the job, get training in that job, the minorities, so that they can grow. And we've got a good track record with women in the county having management positions, but we want to see all different minorities and all, very inclusive, to have everybody an opportunity. And I, in charge of workforce development as a county board member, and we're working within the region and the private sector to give all people of races and backgrounds a good start on the job.
Thank you. How would you propose to keep county infrastructure up to state and in good repair?
Pardon me, could you repeat that question?
How will you propose to keep county infrastructure up to date and in good repair?
Yeah. It's very important. We have the bottom in the county. It's a great place to work, live, and play. We've invested in good roads. So we have a road maintenance plan that we repair roads before, before they get too worn, and then they have to be a major repair. We have a rating on our roads, and then we make investments to actually improve the environment when we improve the road as far as treating water, working with the watershed districts. So good roads, maintaining the roads, investing in the roads, investing in roads that provide good, smart growth. Those are big areas of capital investments. And in our buildings, making them energy efficient and a part of pride that people would want to work for the county and that they're healthy businesses, buildings to work in, doing a lot of things for good energy practices in our government buildings.
Along those same lines, what is your position on providing alternate transportation options to complement public buses in Washington County?
Well, we've got a public bus system. We don't have the best public bus service that's run by the Met Council to the East Metro. We are investing in a transit system called the Gold Line, which is a system that provides on a main route with stops every mile, that comes every 10 or 12 minutes. It's very comfortable, level boarding. That'll be a nice complement to the existing bus. We need multimodal approach, good trails and pathways for people either bike to work, walk to work, and cars will always be valued, and we need to support good logical car transportation. But we need to be multimodal with transit, buses, automobiles, and then good safe pedestrian methods of transportation.
Thank you. With inflation, raising taxes will be, with inflation, raising taxes will be an issue. What would your alternatives do to increasing the county's revenue?
Could you repeat that again?
With inflation, raising taxes will be an issue. What would your alternatives be to increasing the county's revenue?
Yeah. Well, I have a track record on our county board of only taxing what we need to support good services to our residents. As an example, we're getting close to approving the 2023 budget. It'll be somewhere in the four, it's too early to say, but we're anticipating somewhere in the 4% range of increase. That might equal to like $20 a home roughly, on the average median valued home. Inflation's up around 7, 8, 9%. We aren't going to increase taxes that high. We're only going to collect what we need. So I'm pretty proud that we're able to keep modest increases in taxes. Like I say, in 2020 with the pandemic, we kept it level. So we need to work smarter, change things, stop things that don't work. We have to be nimble to meet the needs and provide good services at a fair taxable cost on the property values. Also, we only cover about one-fourth of everybody's total property tax bill, the county. There's school district, city taxes, and sometimes some state taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question. How would you strike a balance between satisfying the short-term desires of constituents with the sometimes conflicting long-term goals of the county?
Yeah, you know, as a county commissioner, I almost get inquiries daily on needs of citizens, and we usually can meet them. But sometimes when you're elected, you have to make the tough call and explain to the constituent, the resident, why we can't give them that service because it's costly or it's not unfair to others. So when you're elected, you have to look at the overall. What's best for the overall community and make the decision based on that? Sometimes there's inequities, and you can help what individual or a small neighborhood and things, but you have to be looking at the big picture. What's going to serve everyone the best and to be fair?
Thank you. Next question. How are the changing demographics in our county going to affect county services?
We try to be nimble and like we just had the census, and that's why we did some redistricting, shifted boundaries. But we look at the makeup of our citizen, the age of our citizen, the minority population, way people are living, and we have to be looking and planning ahead to meet the needs of our citizens and what our citizenship's going to look like 10 years from now. So we're always looking ahead, implementing the present but planning for the future and implementing and trying to work for a smart county that meets the needs. The investments are much cheaper when you do good planning for the future.
Next question. What future changes of improvement do you believe are needed for our county parks?
We have wonderful county parks. We, I think we have some of the best county parks in the metro area. Lake Elmo Park Reserve, Big Marine Park Reserve, Cottage Grove Ravine Park. These are like over 1,000 acres. Lake Elmo Park Reserve is over 2,000 acres. We've added trails. So we, again, we have a really good survey that we do every three years to the citizens. It's very specific. We actually get a really good return on feedback for the survey. So we do it in a way that encourages feedback, and we really put a lot of value in that feedback of our residents. So I think we're meeting the needs and providing trails and parks. One area we're doing, because we have a lot of American citizens that have second languages or preferred languages, we're trying to make it welcoming to all cultural backgrounds by having maybe smartphones where they can have an interpretive park amenities explained in the language of their culture. We can do things like that that don't change the park, but it makes it more welcoming for everyone.
And the question was asking though, what future changes of improvements do you believe are needed in the parks?
We're addressing that in a lot of trails. Here's one that we're reacting to is right now, we have a central corridor trail that goes down the center of the county. Our county is roughly 10 miles wide by 40 miles long, and we're putting in a trail as an example of a future amenity that we feel will serve our citizens for many decades to come as a trail, a safe trail. Sometimes it's going through parks and not on the road or along the road, but it'll go from Cottage Grove Ravine Park up through Lake Elmo Park Reserve all the way up to Big Marine, 40 miles. Connecting trails is something we're working on and we need. And keeping the St. Cora River pristine and clean, we're working on tributary waterways that stay clean by buying key water resource areas. Thank you.
Thank you. How will you balance the trade-offs between recreational interests and opportunities and economic interests?
Regarding what subject?
How would you balance the trade-offs between recreational interests, opportunities, and economic interests? Between the interest?
Yeah. Again, cities do do the zoning and development of their own cities such as Woodbury and Cottage Grove and Oakdale. But we can work with them to do mutual partnering on parcels of land that could be protected for generations to come. So it's a balance of looking at the overall community and then working with the cities on mutual goals of planning for a balance of park and open space and natural areas. Everything doesn't be a formal park, just natural areas. And we, we leverage monies, Met Council money, state money, federal money, for that's a low cost to taxpayers. But then develop, support development where it makes sense for good jobs, clean jobs, clean environment, and helps keep our taxes low.
Next question. Tell us how you have, how do you reach out to get to know your constituents and their needs?
When I, as an example, I'm running for reelection. I'm doing a lot of door knocking, but you shouldn't just wait for your reelection year to do that. I go to a lot of events. I belong to three different chambers, the Woodbury Chamber, Oakdale Chamber, St. Paul Chamber. I belong to community groups. One, a national night out, I run around all night long, get to eight different One, a national night out, I run around all night, lying into eight different communities. I love getting out amongst the community. So to really be a good public servant, it's not just the meetings we go to and voting on how we spend money, but it's really getting out into the community, visiting with the residents, knowing their needs, asking their needs, showing that you care. I love getting out in the community. It's one of my strengths.
Next question. What can the county do to address homelessness in the community?
Every county has a homeless problem. You know, we're very affluent here. We're lucky that we look around and we don't see homelessness, but I'm involved in an education foundation with our public schools, and it's amazing how many kids have families that don't have a home. They live out of their car. So we've taken the American Relief Plan Act, and rather than just rely on our nonprofits, Community Thread, and Habitat for Humanity, and Three Rivers, and other nonprofit groups that provide housing, we have committed six to eight million dollars, and with the ability to go up in a American Relief Plan Fund, so it's not taxpayers. We're gonna, looking for a structure for emergency housing to keep someone out of the cold. That's the safety net government should provide. No one should sleep, although some people elect to do that on their own, but if somebody is down on their luck, they should not be sleeping out in the cold and in unsafe conditions.
Thank you.
It's a moral decision.
Next question. Describe your view of the role of the libraries in Washington County. What, if any, improvements would you recommend, and where would you find the funding to make these changes and keep the libraries valid, viable, rather into the future?
Right. In District Two, I was working with our community, and we have a Wildwood Library in Modest Media. It's a brand-new library, and that provides such a great positive influence on that community. And then down here at the Stafford Library, it's the fifth most-used library in the state. We are going to be making the coming years an investment to rehab that, make it pertinent. We, again, through our survey and working with our librarians, working with our residents, libraries are more pertinent than ever. There's still going to be always some hard copy books, but we're getting into electronic books. We're getting into all sorts of ability to provide services. What's great about libraries is they're a place for people to go that can't afford a laptop computer, and it's an even playing field when they can go there and provide the latest software. But we are going to make investments. They're vital. Our libraries are some of the best. We want to keep them that way. Residents really appreciate good libraries.
Thank you so much. How will you advocate for the county at the state and federal level for funds for healthcare, transportation, and affordable housing?
We spend a lot of time working with our state legislature. The county has to provide mandated services. I hear you mentioned housing. What were the other topics?
Healthcare, transportation, and affordable housing.
Yeah. So as an example, I serve on TAB, the Transportation Advisory Board. I represent our county board on that, and we, there's a federal solicitation every two years of two hundred and thirty-five million dollars, and I watch out that, make sure that Washington County gets their fair share. We need to lobby. We go out to Washington DC and lobby for federal money. We pay federal taxes, state taxes, and as a county board member, working with our staff, we lobby and work with our state legislature to make sure we're getting a fair return back to Washington County for areas of social services, safety net programs, because they're mandated services, and the state needs to step up and pay their share for that. We don't have to do it on the taxpayers' dollar locally here off the property taxes.
Thank you so much. Next question. What changes, if any, do you propose to the way in which human services are delivered in Washington County?
Human services, we have a three-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar budget, and roughly fifty percent of that is human services, safety net programs from children that are abused, some of it senior needs, opioid addiction. We are the backbone for the safety nets. So again, we're working with the state to make sure they provide that funding, but we need to change, and we really listen to our social workers that are meeting with residents and need to change and make it efficient for that we're providing services of people in need that are efficient and there's no wasted money. I think I'm very proud, I think out of seven counties, we have the lowest, second-lowest tax rate out of seven metropolitan counties.
Thank you so much.
So we do it at an affordable rate, but those social service programs are important to people in need.
Thank you. Next question. Do you see the county commissioner's role as a full-time or part-time leadership position, knowing the time that Phil's, I'm sorry, knowing the time that, the role, trying to read this, sorry, apologize. How would you balance your time, I guess, whether it's a full-time or a part-time position with you?
It's a full-time. As I'm here, I know my opponent couldn't make it, but you have to make sure you show up. It's a privilege to serve. It's an honor to serve. Each day I get up and I say, you know, hopefully can make our county a little bit better each day. It's full-time. My wife often says it's more than full-time. I was, served on a city council for many years. I was a mayor at one time. Those roles are important, are very demanding with the county role. Districts Two represents eight different cities, and I'm really fortunate to have been elected at a city council, mayor level, and now county commissioner to work effectively with the cities. But it's full-time and at times more than full-time, and it takes dedication. I look forward to each day serving, and I hope to continue to.
Next question. How do you plan to ensure that the concerns of all cities in your district are heard, including the small ones like Willermy?
Good point. You know, I think as an elected official, you can't sit back and wait for a need. So I call on my cities. I work with my mayors. I do follow-up calls. Willermy, not only Willermy, I have Birchwood, Landfall, Pine Springs. They're all less than like a thousand people. I represent about fifteen thousand people in Woodbury, and Oakdale's about thirty thousand. But as county commissioners, we work really well together on all the needs and balance out our budget to serve the county as an overall. But you have to go out of your way as an elected official in the small cities to seek them out. They're a quiet voice. They don't need a lot, but you should call on them and treat them with respect. So I proportion my time somewhat when I can to my populations, but I really reach out to those small cities. They're unique cities. They're very small government, and sometimes they need the help of a big county to help them out on a road, road issue or a social service program.
Thank you. What would you propose to help ensure that the county board works effectively with other government agencies in Washington, in Washington, in Washington County and beyond?
That's so critical, to work with the different agencies. On the county board, I've been assigned a lot of the statewide initiatives. I mentioned workforce development. I'm in charge on the board. I've been assigned a lot of transportation, Transportation Advisory Board. So it's really important that public and private agencies, that we develop relationships, and that's what I'm proud at. My six years of serving, I've really developed relationships that have helped our county, our district, to be effective and get the appropriations we deserve. But we're working with the state legislature, the federal government, pollution control agencies, the DNR. When we acquire these lands to protect, we're working from Belwin Conservatory to the DNR, to the Met Council, and you have to partnership, and it's so important to develop partnerships.
Thank you. Another question. And how do you plan to work with state, federal, and local officials to meet the needs of South Washington County?
Yeah. You know, the same. When I came, we have a couple potential state legislators that might become county commissioner. Well, you develop a relationship. We work almost daily, if not weekly, with a strategy. We have a platform that the county board develops each year, and it's a federal platform for federal funding that we pay taxes for and we deserve, and state taxes that we pay in and we deserve. And we really develop a platform and work with other electeds to partnership for a better county.
We're coming toward the end of our questions here. One more question. When deciding how to spend tax dollars, how will you balance the needs of your constituents with those outside of your district?
You know, we've got, even before I was on the county board, the county board has a great reputation of, we work together for the betterment of the county. So, you know, when I represent District Two, those are the citizens I report to, and I become more of an expert for the area of District Two as a such, Woodbury. But when we get together as five commissioners and work with our staff to set priorities, citizens don't know where the boundary is. When they leave District Two and go into District Four or Five, they just want a good county. So we really balance our spending and our priorities to meet the needs of the overall county, and that serves us well. And if we track the money, it almost gets proportionally spent evenly in each district, maybe at different times and different years, but overall, we're working together at the county board to make our county the best possible, and that's really a fun part of it because Lake Elmo Park Reserve, they come from all over the county. They don't know, they don't know a district boundary for that park, and they don't care the citizens. So we need to serve all the citizens of the county when you're on the county board.
Thank you so much. One more question. Washington County has one of the highest median home values in the metro area. How would you use community development agency and other county-controlled tools to invest less expensive and more modest homes so that affordable housing funding can support lower-income residents?
Yeah, it's a concern. Everybody likes their home when the home value goes up. Now, the home values is, going into 2023, went up twenty percent average across our county. That doesn't mean their property taxes are going up twenty percent. Like I said, we're going to be in the four percent levy range. So there's more and more value they're getting out of their value of their home and paying less taxes proportionally. But we need, it is a danger. We have so many young adults that need a start. So we're working with, you know, Habitat for Humanity, Two Rivers Land Trust. We're investing, I mentioned, in some workforce affordable housing. We're coming, we draw it out on the cost of the project for that the rents can be, a good county has a balance of higher-end housing but also affordable housing. There can be modest housing that's very neat and very welcoming in a community but can be affordable. So we need to partner with a strategy with our cities to make sure we work on affordable housing, that anybody working hard can put a down payment on a home and get a head start.
We have come to the end of our questions. Time for your closing remarks. You have one minute for closing comments.
Well, again, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters. It's always an honor to come before and have a discussion and tell the citizens of what I'm about. My opponent could not be here tonight, but I'm, really would like your vote. I think I'm doing a really good job. I can be, Google Stan Karwoski, you can find out a lot about me. I hope to knock on your door in the coming weeks. You'll see my literature. I've really got a good track record on supporting the environment with protecting water resources, investing in solid waste management. I could go into road, we're having a Western Service Center for Licensing in Woodbury that'll be new. We improved County Nineteen, worked with the city on their roads. Four ninety-four, ninety-four, six ninety-four, we improved that interchange, invested in that study. We're going to hopefully have a flyover design. We're making investments. So I really want to help make this county even better than it is, and with the voters' support, working together, we'll have a better county moving forward. I appreciate your support at the polls. Voting starts September 23rd. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and I toss it back to Andrew.
Thank you. This concludes our forum for the candidates running for Washington County Commission District Two seat. Thank you to the candidates for choosing to run for office and for their participation in this evening's forum. Thank you to all those who viewed the forum live tonight or who view the recording between now and the election. This is the second of eight candidate forums that the League of Women Voters Woodbury Cottage Grove area will be hosting this September. This is one of our most important services to our community. Last year, we had over three thousand views of our forums. The upcoming forums will be broadcast live on South Washington County Telecommunications Commission, Channel Eighteen and Channel Eight, Fifty-Nine. All the forums will also, or the forums are also all available through their website swctc.org and on their YouTube channel. The upcoming forums that remain are Monday, September twelfth, seven o'clock, Senate District Forty-Seven and House Forty-Seven A and B, eight fifteen, Washington County Commissioner, District Five. Tuesday, September thirteenth is seven o'clock, Senate District Forty-One and House District Forty-One A and B. Tuesday, September twentieth, seven o'clock, Woodbury City Council, and Wednesday, September twenty-first, seven PM, Senate District Fifty-Three and House District Fifty-Three B, and eight fifteen, Newport City Council. Please make every effort to become informed, informed about candidates running for all the offices on this year's ballot, and most importantly, get out and vote.